All right, good evening and welcome to the Board of-
Yeah.
Good, good evening, welcome to the Board of Select meeting for Monday, April 22nd. Madam, Mr. Clark, if you'd read through the agenda.
After the Pledge of Allegiance, we have open forum followed by appointments with Rob Lynch, Lynch, Marini and Associates for an update on the fiscal year 18 audit report and a presentation from Mr. Chow, Veteran Service Officer, and then we'll go into five action items.
All right, thank you, if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jump right into our first appointment with Rob Lynch of Lynch, Marini, I'm sorry, we'll go and do open forum, seeing that no one's here for open forum, I'll close open forum, and we'll move right into our first appointment with Rob Lynch of Lynch, Marini and Associates, give us an update on the fiscal year 18 audit. Good evening, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening to discuss the fiscal year 2018 audit for the town. As noted, I'm Rob Lynch with Lynch, Marini and Associates, and we performed the audit for the town for fiscal year 2018 and issued our report. We reviewed it with management and the reports have been issued. The main objective of the audit is an opinion on the financial statements. The audit is conducted in accordance with government auditing standards. The town was required to have a single audit conducted under uniform guidance. Management's responsibilities include designing and implementing internal controls over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations, establishing financial policies and procedures, ensuring the financial information is reliable and properly reported, and preparation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. As a result of our audit, we did issue an unmodified opinion. The reports are ours, the financial statements are the town's, which is, the unmodified opinion is the opinion that you want, it means that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects and can be relied on by the users. We didn't note any instances of noncompliance, material noncompliance, or significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control. The single audit did not report any findings, so you're complying with the single audit requirements. We did have a management letter where we had some recommendations for improvement in internal control that we've reviewed with management, and they have, as in the past, will address those issues going through, and, you know, some of the comments, the current year comments related to improving the internal control, evaluating the internal control environment and risk assessments, and that's just an ongoing issue that constantly needs to be monitored and updated, implementing a fraud policy and complying with the investment policy, there were some unsecured bank deposits, and then we had some comments about OPEB and other GASBs that are going to be implemented in the future, just as informational comments. Financial statements themselves, there's two sets of financial statements, the government-wide financial statements are full accrual, they report your government activities and your business-type activities, which is water and solid waste, and that reports all assets and liabilities, you know, your capital assets, your, all your receivables are accrued, as well as all your liabilities are reported, including OPEB and your net pension liability. You know, as a result of those liabilities, the unrestricted, unrestricted net position of the town was in a $64.2 million aggregate deficit, but on a fund basis, which is more in line with how the books are maintained by the town accountant under UMS, Uniform Modified Accounting System, or Massachusetts Accounting System, sorry, where all the major funds get reported and then all the other governmental funds are combined together. The general fund is a major fund and reported separately, and under generally accepted accounting principles, that includes the stabilization funds because there's no funding source. The general fund unrestricted fund balance was $8.9 million, so you do have some healthy reserves for the town, you know, probably comparable with your peers, you're doing pretty well with those reserves, not quite to the limits of what's recommended by the GFOA, but for Massachusetts community, in our experience, that's pretty good, you know. So I think what you want to do is develop some type of fiscal policies and target ranges of where you want those reserves, so you can try to help with your budgeting process there. On the budget schedule for fiscal year 2018, you did have a favorable variance in excess of your revenues over expenses of 1.4 million, which is, when you look at the entire budget, that's less than 3% of your entire budget, so it seems like a big number, but, you know, you do want to continue, as you've done in the past, of being conservative in your budgeting process to be able to maintain and keep these reserves, which helps with the bond rating agencies and your bond rating. Overall, that's a brief overview, I know you've had the report, so I could answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
No, I said, we sat down, and you gave it to us before, and just a few things that we have to look at, other than that, it looks like we're doing very, very well.
Yes, Carol?
No, I just appreciate you coming to share it for the public's sake, too.
Sure.
Thank you.
And with OPEB, I mean, we're pretty much in line with other towns, I mean, I know we're not Wellesley where we've paid that off or haven't fully funded, but we're pretty my, we're pretty in line with that.
I would probably say there's, there's more towns, communities that are starting to fund it and get a schedule in place, and that's what the bond rating agencies are starting to look out at now, that you know of, of the liability of a plan in place to fund it, and you're sticking with that plan. You know, down the road, if more and more people start to fund it at a higher rate, you know, that may impact you, so, you know, you are looking at, it's a $65 million total liability that you have for OPEB, and there's $57,000 that you have in your OPEB funds, so that's probably something you do as part of your budgeting process, start to address that.
All right, all right, thank you.
Yeah, it's not all going to be done in one year.
Mr. Chairman, and Rob can correct me, if I may, on the OPEB issue, I think what's going to happen, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, at some point, we'll have to have a funding schedule to fund the unfunded liability, like the pension liability, and I don't know how many years that, when it will occur, but that'll be the same way, so it's, the fact that the town is putting money in is a good thing, but I think, I agree with what Rob said, in terms of towns are now doing it a lot more at greater levels. I think if you look at an MMA recent beacon, the Town of Leamster, just fully funded the OPEB, so it's becoming more, we're becoming more aware of the value, it does affect your bond rating and stuff, but I don't think it'll be long before towns will be required to put it on a funding schedule like the pension.
All right, thank you, very much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, any questions, let me know. Have a good evening.
Stay dry.
See you later.
Just to let folks know, Rocco Longo, interim town administrator, appreciate all the efforts you've put in the last couple weeks, and-
Yeah, I've been here a few days, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity, I've got a lot to learn, and I was, had my first meeting with the Joint FinCom Capital Budget Committee, I will give a little report later, but I'm really happy to be here, especially now it's raining, so it doesn't matter, if I was outside, it wouldn't be so much fun. But I'm happy to be here and working with you guys, and I'm trying to get really acquainted with all of your processes, the budget, especially a town meeting, I assume that's what the board wants me to do, so, thank you guys.
Thank you.
We're happy you're here, too.
All right, and next appointment is Robert Chow, Veteran Service Officer, with an update.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and residents of East Bridgewater. Here's with a bittersweet feeling that I'm here tonight, I am here to let everyone know that I will be retiring from my position as veteran agent as of July 26, 2019. At this time, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Administrator, all Town Hall Departments and residents of East Bridgewater for the devoted and continued support of the veteran and of my position. I'd like to give a big thanks to my predecessor, Peter Spagone, and his assistant, Martha Redgate, for notifying me of this position when it became available and I was able to apply for it, I'm very appreciative of that. I would also like to thank the Selectmen and the Town Administrator at the time of my selection and the opportunity to help my fellow veterans of East Bridgewater, and those Selectmen were David Walsh, Peter Hamilton, and Teresa McNulty, and George Samia was the Town Administrator. It has been an awesome ride and a great honor, and I want to thank everyone involved.
Thank you, Bob.
Any questions, concerns? Like I say, it is bittersweet, you know, bitter because I'm going to be leaving friends and coworkers behind, but not forgotten, and sweet because I'll have more family time, so.
So what are your plans, Bob, when you walk away from us?
To get up and have an extra cup of coffee in the morning, or stay in my PJs, you know, and decide what we want to do that day, so.
That's great.
We appreciate all your efforts over the years, I know you've increased the number of vets that you've been servicing over the years and working with and assisting, and-
And hopefully it continues.
-and families appreciate it.
Are you still going to come back for our parades?
That's debatable, yeah, I'll have to see about that, yes.
We wish you a long and happy and healthy retirement, Bob.
Thank you very much for all you guys have done.
I think we might see you before July 26th.
You probably will, yeah, I'll be around, but thank you.
All right, thank you. And the next two appointments we are tabling for the time being, and now we can move on to action items.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request of Evan Gray for East Bridgewater Commercial Club Youth Football and Cheer to hang a banner on Town Calming to advertise East Bridgewater Youth Football and Cheerleading Registration from April 15, 2019, through July 15, 2019.
All in favor?
Second.
I just have a question on that, we seem to be getting a lot of requests for putting these up there, at some point, we're going to have to establish at what point in time where they're going, because we seem to be coming up with a new one every month.
Yes.
So, and we don't want people, once it gets up there, you know, it shouldn't be moved, so we're going to have to decide if we get multiple ones, where they're going to be going.
Right, I agree with David on that, and we don't, we don't have like a sign ordinance in town, right, or a sign policy, and this might be a way to address some of that, because actually, Historic Commission asked me about this, because, you know, it's three months, it's a long time, it's over Memorial Day, you know, and maybe we do need to start thinking about where do they go and for how long.
And I mean, on certain weekends, you know, especially if we're doing the parade or having another-
The two-run.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's-
So.
We'll look into it.
Something to think about for put a policy in place going forward.
Definitely, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request from the Board of Health to use the outside Sagem Rock to hold a rabies clinic for dogs and cats on June 11, 2019, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the appointment of Joel C. Thomas as Constable, effective April 10, 2019, through June 30, 2021.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No, Joel has been a Constable in town, he probably has more training than most of the Constables we have there, and as a resident, we, we get these requests often, I think we had one two months ago to appoint a Constable, and until at some point in time, we change something where we have elected and appointed, there's no reason why we shouldn't consider it.
I think that is something we should think about going forward, is the, and I talked to the, to Chief Allen, I don't know, did you want to ask the chief if he wanted to weigh in on this?
I, yeah, I spoke with the chief, and, or if you want to come up and speak.
He's looking, but what, going forward, we might want to think about this, we did just have an election where we, you know, did elect people, but we appoint two, and maybe we need to clarify how we do this.
Sure, so, you know, one of the things, you know, this is my third year in the job, you always come across a new situation, so this was certainly the first time this has come across my desk. You know, one of the things that I discovered in, you know, looking at our, you know, our town infrastructure, town reports, in talking with town council, is we have, we did just have an election, we have five elected town Constable positions. We also have appointed Constable positions which are self-bonded, and over the last six to eight years, that number's been anywhere from five up to 14 on an annual basis. You know, when talking with town council, you know, and getting some, you know, some advice from other town departments, you know, they, they conflict with one another. We have an election, and then you also have appointed for the same position, you know, one of the things that, on the advice of town council, that I would certainly want to recommend to the board would be to put a policy in place, you know, to have a process, particularly, you know, I think it's twofold, one, do you want to continue with the infrastructure of elected and bonded, and if so, how that works, the mechanism for that, and then on the, if it's bonded, you know, what is that process? Because right now, the way it works is they go through an application, you know, Mr. Thomas, there is no reason, you know, for me to disqualify him from your consideration, it is background training, et cetera, but as far as the process itself, we really have nothing in writing, and, you know, I think it would behoove us from talking to town council and looking at some other departments in the area, they go through a vetting process. You know, one of the concerns that we have, that I have, is the chief, and then the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association has, is we potentially, or we have people out there that are doing law enforcement work, that have no law enforcement training, no law enforcement background, and that's something that, you know, we want to, you know, consider, especially when they're in town, town positions, so, you know, something for the board to consider.
I know, I know, the state legislator has been working on this for several years with no forward movement, I mean, some of these laws go back probably to the 1800s.
1865 on this one.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, Mr. Thomas, I mean, his resume speaks for itself, I mean, he definitely holds all the credentials, I do think we should table this until we get a little more information from town council, try and get some sort of policy set up moving forward.
I, again, I'm not too sure at this stage of the game why we should be tabling it, we have nothing in place, that, especially with the processes, it goes through a check through the police department, we know he has all the credentials, even if we table it, we, we're not going to be able to bring in something later that's going to prohibit this appointment. We may be able to prohibit future appointments or future elections, a table on it is not going to change the outcome of this, in my opinion.
No, but at least, but I think at that point, we'll actually have a policy that's going to be applied to everybody that applies, I mean, you know, we need, I just think we need to shore this up a little.
But it wouldn't be effective, it wouldn't be effective until then, this request is here now.
It is, and I don't think it would take that long for town council, working with them, to set up some sort of a policy, you know, either we look at what other towns do and what their policies and procedures are, and, and go from there, I mean, I don't think it's going to take that long to move that ahead.
I'd like to hear what Rocco-
If I may, Mr. Chair, I, I think the only issue is setting a precedent, and if you did make the appointment and do put a policy in, it might be treating people differently that come after the policy, so if the, I think you could say to the chief, you want a policy in 30 days, he can work with town council, and you table the appointment and bring it back, and then with the policy takes away any precedent. There, there's a bigger issue with this whole issue of appointing Constables, and I've just went through in another town, because how many, how many, how many Constables do you even need? And, and in actuality, for the town's benefit, you know, the service is provided for free through, through the deputies, but I know there's been a culture, and you've had them for a long time, but I, I don't, the board, you know, can do what your pleasure is, but I would recommend following the chief's guidance and tabling it until you had a policy in place, then setting a precedent based on that policy, and it sounds like the candidate that's applied at night would not have an issue meeting that, so tabling it for 30 days. And it is very unique when you have an election and then things don't work out, and what is the message to the voters, again, it's very confusing, and there's a history here, I think ultimately, the foundation of this is an antiquated law, so the board can still have, you know, as many, and maybe that should be part of the policy, how many Constables do you need, because there, and I'd like to ask town council about the liability the town's exposed to, because that was an issue in one town that I worked in, where if you went to a house and did something that you weren't supposed to do, you know, I guess, you know, that should be addressed, I'm not sure, I'm not an attorney, and, but I think that should be addressed, but if it's not unfair to the chief to come back within two weeks or 30 days with a policy, would probably be the safe bet for the select board.
Mr. Tom, if you'd like to say something?
I don't have a problem with what the chief would like to do, I would like to see a time limit on it, and I would, my personal feeling is, when you're appointing people, you have a different standard than the election, and I'm appointed in four other towns, and most of the towns have asked me, have I been to the police academy and am I covered in service training? And I am, I have went to the academy and graduated in 2005, and for the last 14 years, including this year, I just completed my in-service training. I think all of the Constables should have a background, there should be a training policy as part of your standard as well.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, you know, too, I, you make the appointment, I, all I can tell you is there are no disqualifying reasons to disqualify Mr. Thomas.
Oh, yeah, no, none at all, no.
Same, you know, I think words might have got mixed up.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, no, there's nothing that disqualifies him whatsoever.
And as far as from making the appointment, that's solely, that does lie with you, my, certainly, you know, to, in fairness to Joel Thomas, if the board were to set a table is, you know, I would expedite doing anything with, with town council, because as Mr. Shidi said, you know, you know, his, his background, his training experience, you know, is certainly amongst, you know, the top in this region as far as Constables are concerned.
I mean, do you think you could come back in 30 days?
I mean, I, I'm going to be on the phone with town council first thing in the morning to, you know, you know, make a determination, but, you know, I, I would push to do it sooner than that.
All right.
I'd be all right with tabling it, given that there's a limited timeframe on that, and given that, you know, Joel spoke and said that he was okay with it as well, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, we'll table that for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to table, I'll make a motion to table this and look for a request within 30 days to bring them in front of the board for another meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I think Joel had a discussion point.
I know you have a question about why you need so many of them, and why so many apply. Part of it is that I am a vendor for the Department of Revenue and Child Support Enforcement, and there are certain things you can only do in the towns you are elected or appointed in, and that gives myself a greater working area, but it also helps out Department of Revenue and Child Support Enforcement in carrying out their part of child support and making sure that it gets served by the right people. Just as another thought as to why people are trying to get multiple tops.
People bring different skills-
Yes.
...and licenses that they have.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, with, with his knowledge, he might be helpful to the chief when he drafts the policy to provide some guidance, because that's important to know. Now, as I said, there's a lot more to appointing a Constable than just a typical appointment, but if you have the right vetting process, in fact, having them come and interview with you is probably the right thing to do, but I think he made some good points, he could be, if he would, be helpful to the chief when, when that policy comes forward to provide some-
A lot of people have no idea what a Constable is, or what they do-
That's right.
...and why they do it.
That's right.
And that is right across the board. I would be glad to help with the chief.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following common Vicki law license for the period ending December 31, 2019, license number 50, Deli Italiano, Michael Simonetti, Manager 1, 18 North Bedford Street, hours Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 7 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion?
A new deli.
Yeah, the food is excellent, so.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wish him well.
He's going to bring us a sample, did you say that?
I hope so. Is that vice chairman's responsibility?
It is.
Get food lined up for them.
As of now, we haven't done it.
I will, yeah, I like that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following application for one-day liquor licenses from the Villa at Rida Country Club for weddings on the following dates as printed.
Second.
Any further discussion?
They have a busy season.
Good for them.
Saying none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's the end of the action items, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I will head on to the interim town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a few items to share with you, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, so, I have started, I, it's been three or four days, and I'm working on getting the budget put together, there's a lot of support I'm getting from the fiscal team, especially the town accountant, it's been converted from Lotus to XL, I did share it with the finance committee, and I did attend the meeting tonight, just to kind of get a brief overview on what needs to be done, and the deadline that we talked about, May 20th of that joint meeting that we had, and I did share the idea and possibly making a very brief presentation with the superintendent, I haven't talked to her yet, but it may be helpful, but I'll take direction from the board, and I don't want to make town meeting any longer than necessary, but I know how the process works sometimes, and at the public meetings, when there's not good attendance, maybe a, a quick presentation at town meeting could be helpful, but I'll yield to you for some counsel on that. Also, I had a meeting with, with the chair and John Clifford to talk about the town meeting process and getting the warrant ready, so we're using the date of May 20th kind of as a, as a deadline to get everything done, so that the board would have the joint meeting, can vote on the articles going forward, because time will fly very quickly, and there is a lot to get done, and I'm going to do my best to, to, to help with the budget especially. Want the board to be aware that I, I'm going to meet weekly with the fiscal team, with the assessor, with the treasurer, and the town accountant, I think it'll be helpful, probably more for me than for them, but we'll build a team and- and I think we'll benefit from that, because of the budget responsibility, all those fiscal responsibilities does take a team effort, and we'll be working on not only the budget, but some policies to bring before you, and I think the policies will come forward in line with the potential benefit of, again, the bond rating, the credit rating that the town has. Also, I had a brief meeting with the school business manager this week, John Shea, it was a very helpful meeting. I also met with the Green Communities rep, and again, I need some direction from the board, and then the rep from the Old Colony Planning Council. With interest of having the town pursue the Green Communities Act, there could be upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available for green entities, and you've done some things here, I noticed, in the building. Now, the good news about that application is, is that sometimes those things become a little burden for staff people, or the administrator, or the office, but there is a grant for seventy-five hundred dollars that we're eligible for to get the Old Colony Planning Council to put the grant together for us to apply. But I think, you know, when, when most communities in Massachusetts are now part of the Green Community Program, that money is going to go to the other towns, and it won't come to East Bridgewater if you don't apply. Kingston, Hanson, Whitman, Duxbury, Halifax, Hanover, Pembroke, and I can go through the whole list, but I think it would be a good thing, and with the board's permission, I would proceed with that first step. And then there'd be some education, at some point, we could talk more about it, but I did meet on Friday with the outgoing rep who is moving on to a promotion, but I met with the Old Colony Planning Council, and they'd be willing to do that grant for us. So, I'll go through this, and we can talk about it if you have questions. I've continued to do the individual department head meetings, and it's really been a kind of a pleasure. The staff here is outstanding, internal staff in the Selectmen's Office included, and I've enjoyed the opportunity to meet people, learn a lot about the town. In fact, I could say, the first time I've been in East Bridgewater is when I came here to meet with you guys and to work, so it's been interesting, and I didn't know much about the town, but it's pretty impressive, and I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to work with the staff here. I did have the opportunity to sit with Carol a little bit, and I like to do that with the other board members, and I'll continue to do that regularly, just to get a sense on what you want me to do. And I sense now that obvious priorities are getting the budget together and getting ready for town meeting, and I'll continue to do that. As you heard, tonight with the Veterans Agent retiring, I can help the board if you'd like me. Again, I'd like some direction, I can get that process started. What I've done in other towns, and I'll work with you however you want me to work, is the initial stages of advertising and recruiting and bringing people in, and I would use a team of people to help me on the department head staff, only because sometimes empowering other department heads helps teamwork. It makes an impression on people applying for the job, that it's not just a one-time and one individual person. In fact, if you knew a veteran or two that wanted to participate in the process, that could be helpful, too, empowering a citizen to get involved. And knowing that the conclusion, we would bring three names forward to the Selectmen, and you would interview the three, and I hope you would tell me how stressful it would be, because we have three good candidates, and you didn't know which one to appoint, because that's the mission when you're bringing another department head in. And also, you know, the department head team picking somebody brings that person a little closer and to the staff, and the staff to the new person coming on board, it could be very helpful. I wanted you to be aware of, I spent a little time with the fire chief this morning, and he, just so that you're aware, he's applied for twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars from the last storm, that's seventy-five percent of the cost. Sometimes little things like that get put aside. I think it's significant, and it shows the chief is taking the extra step to bring the money forward, and I thought that would be important for you to be aware of that. And I am going to pursue with our council, Town Council, training for the staff on two areas, unlawful harassment training, I think it's important. The laws have changed significantly, I think the staff needs to know it. I think there's training that's provided to the support staff, and then this training provided supervisors. Supervisors have a little extra role in that training, and then eventually getting into just cause training. So I will have department head meetings, and I'll, when I meet with them the first time, I'll ask them if they want to meet once a month or twice a month during the transition period, and I'll ask them if there's an area that they'd like to consider for additional training. And the hidden agenda that I would have is that, that's kind of bringing a team together. So even when we sit and we talk, I mean, at least we're getting to know each other, and through the transition, I think it would be a good thing, and maybe that sets a precedent for them. When somebody else comes in, it's nice to have a group already organized that's willing to support the administration. So that concludes the brief, and I'd be happy to respond to questions if you have any.
Questions?
You know, the other thing I know, it's great to get the, you know, team together for the Veterans Replacement, Veterans Agent Replacement, and I think we also have to get started on getting a team together for a permanent Town Administrator. Again, the sooner the better on how we're going to deal with that.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, on that regard, I
Want to share with them what you and I talked about on Friday with the three firms.
Well, so probably the best way to start, you can choose a firm to assist you or not. Sometimes it's better to have a firm, because there's a lot of responsibility and there's a significant amount of work, and I know that the Selectmen's staff will feel it, but I think if you bring in three, there's three consultants, now that I'm aware of, that do the searches, and if you look in the MMA Bulletin, and if you look at Town Manager's Position, you'll see the three entities. One's in northern Mass, Danvers, the North Shore, Community Paradigm is out of Bridgewater, and the Collins Institute in Boston. I think the benefit of bringing three firms in is you'll learn something. They'll all have a little bit of a different approach, they'll all have a little bit of a different price, and I know price will be significantly influential on you, but I think taking advantage of bringing three entities in would be a good thing to do, and you'll learn something, and they'll learn about the town. But I think having the support's important, and just so you know that I can't have a role in any of the selection process, I still subscribe to my code of ethics. I can't help you with the process, I did provide you with the ICMA resource of recruiting a manager. I certainly would be an advocate for people, or my colleagues, to come here, it would be a great place to work, but other than that, I wouldn't be involved with any of the screening process, I wouldn't be involved with any of the selection, but I can't help you with questions and those kinds of things. So, when you're ready, you know, we can set that appointment up, but I think you can do it in one night, I think if you limit their time to fifteen minutes, it might extend your meeting a night, you can do it on a separate night, but I think it would be very valuable to you and to the public to hear what's involved with recruiting the Administrator, because I don't think you've done it in a few years.
I mean, maybe we can, you know, start calling them next couple days and see if we can get them scheduled in for a next meeting, and like you said, keep each one to fifteen to twenty minutes.
I can work with Rebecca, and I think we could do that. I'm sure they're pretty anxious to come in. I mean, you know, it's, it's something that they strive for, so, and I think they're very, three different entities, so.
And I mean, your wife did call me earlier and tell me that, you know, we need to get moving on this as well, so.
She phoned me before the meeting, too.
I got a registered letter.
I didn't get anything, I felt was
Her attorney. But no, I think that would be a wise thing for you to do, and then that would set the prescription going forward and how you can go through that process, but that's what I'd suggest.
Anything else?
That's great, and I love the idea of the Green Communities Grant, I think that's terrific for us to get on board with them.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I think we need to, you know, I mean, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, I think, you know, getting a new Veteran Agent in, we've got to figure out how that's going to look going forward. You know, we definitely need to get these firms in here over our next meeting or two, have their presentations done. One other thing from our meeting the other day with John Clifford, was he said that under the town bylaws, I believe, we have to at least open town meeting on May thirteenth, I think the date was, so we're going to have to check with the moderator.
Yes, we have to open it.
Open it, and I think we can do it.
I think he's already been notified.
Yeah.
I think the good news is that, the good news to me is that you don't have to have a quorum to open the meeting and delay, because if you did, that would be tough to get people to come to a meeting, so that you can move it to another date certain. So, Town Council said under state law, you don't need a quorum to do that. And I'll help the board, and we can write either a press release or something, so the citizens know that the meeting is just going to be to set a permanent, or an effective meeting, as opposed to the tabling because of the transition.
Yeah, let's get ahead of that, so that people understand it before we do it.
Good point.
Rebecca, we've already notified the moderator, he was listed, what, the thirteenth?
I, I don't know, but I'll know tomorrow, or maybe if
I don't know if I've asked him about the thirteenth, I've asked him about every other date, but I don't know if I've asked him.
Okay.
I mean, he was originally
Right.
available on the thirteenth, so we should be.
He should just have every, like, Monday, Friday, June, just set aside, or whatever we decide to do.
He's usually fine with every date.
And I would bounce a press release off Town Council to make sure it's supported legally, even though it's not a legal notice, but I'd want it to say exactly. He might want to refer to your bylaw or something like that.
And I think it's something we can do right here, you know, prior to our meeting.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we've had other town meetings in this room, I think, when we did the fifth agreement years ago, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah. You know, I just want to take a moment, I know with the changes we've had, probably a month and a half ago, the department head, you know, several department heads are meeting with the schools, the lodge departments, trying to stop the budget process moving forward, and I just wanted to thank all the department heads that were involved in that process, you know, everyone just trying to, you know, get their heads wrapped around the budget and what money's going where, and I'd like to thank Town Counting and Town Treasurer, I think they've been working a lot of overtime lately with all the changes, so we appreciate your efforts from everybody. And, you know, I just want to thank Rocco for everything he's been doing in a short amount of time. It's appreciated.
Just for the record, Rocco really leaves his job, he had a brief sent out, what's that, ten seventeen last night?
Yes.
To prepare us for today.